Yeah.
You ready?
Yes, ready.
Okay, good afternoon, everyone. Today is June 27th. Exactly four, 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 two, four, three. I call Ingrid Chris May on council special meeting to order. Okay, let's have a black solid all together. All stand up, please.
For the United States and our republic, which stands one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Could you have a roll call, please?
Let's read the, uh...
Oh, I, 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 oh, oh, okay, oh, I'm sorry. The compliance meeting statement first, yes.
This meeting was called pursuant to the provision of the Open Public Meeting Act, P L nineteen seventy five, chapter two thirty one. Notice of this meeting was included in a notice sent to the Star Ledger Health News and the Record on June twenty third, twenty twenty five, posted on the bulletin board in the municipal building and has remained continuously posted as the required notice under the statute. Copies of the above-mentioned notice are available to the public and on file in, in the office of the municipal clerk.
Okay, thank you, Platte. The roll call, please.
Sure, ma'am. Mayor Park.
Here.
Councilwoman Drummond.
Here.
Councilman Luciano. Accent. Councilwoman Biguetz.
Yes.
Councilman Liang.
Here.
Councilman Patel.
Yes.
Council, Councilman Patrubez.
Yes.
Okay, thank you, your phone call. Okay, starting the public hearing. I want to introduce our new clerk here, Bill Reednayden. Okay, why don't you say what is the one reward and to public?
Thank you, mayor and council for choosing me, having me. I'm eager to work with you, the governing body and the community at large. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you, mother, welcome. Okay, and I'm going to open public hearing, uh, five minute time minutes. I need a motion.
Make a motion.
Okay, all in favor?
Yeah.
Okay, uh, probably come out here. Okay?
So, motion by, uh, Blackwood Commission, the motion is...
Yeah, Councilman Liang.
And Patel.
Councilman Patel, Biguetz, okay. Okay, and, okay, come out here, anybody else, and state your name and address, please come out. Okay, uh...
I'm Mary O'Shea, twelve Bergen Avenue. Um, first of all, I would like to say I am not in favor of the YouTube recording as a mayor watching council meetings live because last regular meeting, last meeting that you had last month, or this one, um, I went on to the agenda and there was no link. So, I was unaware that it was on YouTube and I missed the council meeting and I noticed it was a very heavy agenda because I had printed it. This time I did see that you have it on YouTube, but because it's in the afternoon, I'm able to come. Um, I much prefer the Zoom meetings that we had all previous, previously last year where, um, the members in attendance plus the members in the audience that are viewing online can be seen and as a member of the audience online, I am allowed to comment. YouTube does not let me comment. You do not know what the residents are thinking about what you're doing and it's not, um, good as far as transparency. And I really would like you to reconsider and go back to the Zoom presentations of the, of the meetings. Um, that's the first thing. Next, um, it seems to be, uh, the new idea is hiring part-time people. The Borough Board needs full-time personnel to take care of its business. We need a full-time clerk. We need a full-time administrator. We do not need a lot of people that are part-time coming and going. We don't know whether they're in, they're out, they're not here, where they are. Okay, we have the need for full-time and I think you need to advertise in the, whatever the municipal place where you advertise for help and in the Bergen Record. I've seen towns advertising in the Bergen Record recently for clerks. And we need to advertise and get qualified people here full-time. We are entitled to full-time help when they need something to be done or need to have a question that there's somebody available during business hours. Um, next, um, I'd like to thank Mayor Park and Councilwoman Biguetz for being at the planning board meeting last night with, uh, Mr. Masredda going over the, uh, foreground of the housing element. And I did speak then and I would just like to reiterate a few of the things because many of the council people might not be aware. Um, the, the things that I, I brought up and discussed were, um, when an overlay zone is being converted from commercial to an inclusionary development, that whatever the buffer zone was that may, was required in the commercial zone, it should be carried over to the inclusionary zone. You know, we had a lot of uproar from the residents when the buffer zone on Floyd Street was cut down and that was because it was residential to residential. So, when you talk about going on Palisade Avenue, nine W, uh, if it's a commercial property and it becomes inclusionary, it should maintain the same buffer that was required when it was commercial. If there was no buffer on that commercial property, which there are some, like, uh, twenty-four hour fitness, then at least it should be a twenty-five foot buffer. Um, the set aside that we have now, in our set aside ordinance is twenty percent in, uh, low and moderate income housing for, uh, compared to the market rate housing. I think you should increase it to thirty percent. We're trying, we have a lot of numbers to try to fill on our affordable and we're not going to do it with twenty percent. We need to increase it to thirty percent. Um, and I do not believe in mixed use in those, uh, buildings that would be proposed with retail, commercial on the first floor. I think you should have apartments and residential in the whole building because nine W is, is not a main street, it's a four-lane highway, cars, it was by fifty-plus miles an hour. Englewood Cliffs is not a walkable town, it's a rideable town, everybody goes everywhere in a car. And with three, three floors of apartments, again, we'll get more units and then at thirty percent, we'll be able to fill our, our requirements. The area by South nine W, on the east side of nine W, where Chiafi property is, a few years ago, the, uh, planning board declared that area as an area in need of improvement because the sewers were over fifty years old and the water, water pipes are probably over a hundred years old. And Mr. Masredda's report, he says those sewers and water pipes are good. We do not know they're good. We, we assumed they were not good when we did the area need redevelopment and that has to be changed in the report. Okay, we cannot say it's good because it's not good. It's old, it's very old. Okay? Um, when you talk about underground garages, I believe all underground garages, commercial or residential, should be prohibited. I think you need to do an ordinance prohibiting all below-grade garages, residential or commercial. Okay, especially now with the overlay zones, if you're going to have underground garages, you're going to have a higher impact and...
Okay, uh, Mary O'Shea, your time is, your time limit is already over, yes? I'm sorry about it.
I just forgot something said. It's okay.
Thank you, thank you for your, okay, thank you. Okay, next.
Martin Geiger, two seventy Elder Street. I don't believe that you bothered to notify the residents whose property directly backs onto these new overlay zones, unfaking of the residents who live on Center Street, Hawthorne Avenue, Clifton Terrace, Rose Avenue, and at the ends of Rock Road and Tommy Drive. Mr. Mayor, how would you feel if your government rezoned the property behind your house and didn't tell you? What about you, Mr. Kadruviz? How do you feel about that? In any event, I think you should give a notice, personal notice, to everyone whose property, at least no less, the property abuts the, the, uh, new zones, let alone the entire town. This, uh, you've evidently been working on these zones for quite some time, more than the ten days that were minimum notice that you've given. And you have never discussed, disclosed what you've been doing in public meetings, you've been working behind closed doors, you've been, the Gottes has mentioned that, and whether you intend or not, you basically have kept the public and even the planning board in dark for as long as possible.
All yours, my word, ma'am.
The, uh... There are, uh, in effect, what you're authorizing now, Mr. Mayor and council, are thirteen hundred and fifty units. How do we get to that, the two overlay zones with commercial could be over a thousand? Plus you have the forty-eight units at Chiafi, plus you have up to three hundred units based on your new sixty-unit sell-side provision. That's thirteen hundred and fifty, which I'll note for you is about half of what you read around the town screaming about five years ago when you and Kadruviz ran for election. You actually wrote, "Oh, it's going to cost us two hundred million dollars for two new schools, fifty million dollars for new police stations and fire stations, there'll be a five thousand to twenty thousand dollar property tax increase per year for the life of a house, ten thousand additional residents." Well, where's the outrage now? Mr. Park, you spoke at a hearing on, of July of the twenty nineteen. You said, "We have to fight, we have to spend eighty-six million dollars in litigation fees fighting a plan that would have provided ninety-five units, only ninety-five units." And you said, "Let's fight that, spend six million." Well, you spent six million and you lost it. And not only did you lose it, you went back to court to try to undo it and cost this town another seven million dollars in a judgment. So, how can we trust you? Why should we trust you? You wrote here, "You will immediately implement the original two thousand eighteen Forte Housing Plan." You didn't. You hired a new litigation team you said would win. You did and they lost. You would overturn punitive court decisions. No, you didn't. And finally, you would deliver full transparency, full transparency on borough business. Here it is, with a picture on it, full transparency. You call this transparency and you're going to approve thirteen hundred and fifty units and haven't even bothered to tell the people who live in town what you're doing. You brought out the metaphorical, the metaphorical pitchforks in July of two thousand nineteen over Cranjacks Plan. This is fifty percent as large and yet silence, crickets, nothing. I think that's a vulnerable and I think it's a blemish on your administration.
Thank you. Okay, next, please. Okay, yes, come on.
Karen Geiger, first I reinforce everything that Mrs. O'Shea and my husband have said. There was no notice to residents, none. People are directly affected by this plan and they didn't know anything about it. It's not my responsibility or the planning board's responsibility to notify them, it's yours. You are the mayor and council. You're doing exactly what you criticized the Democrats for when they had their MOU. But even then, they had a meeting at the upper school and notified the entire town what was at risk and several of you were there and spoke against it. The settlement agreements, you criticized also, that those settlements agreements were put together by court ruling in less than five days. You had over six months to develop this plan and you produced a shoddy document. You just basically copied some of the areas from the settlement agreement and threw them in, not looking at the differences in the particular lands that were designated, not understanding that these properties back directly on homes and affect both the flooding in town and our horrible infrastructure underneath it. Who worked on this plan? Miss Masredda last night said he worked with the committee. Who was at the committee? He wouldn't name the members. Were there any residents involved in this? Residents who are affected by what you are putting forward here. Instead of learning from the problems and concerns that we've been dealing with over the past seven years, you've ignored them. You put together a plan, a numerical plan, that meets a state requirement, but it doesn't meet the requirements of our community. You have mixed-use zoning that isn't required even by the numbers that you have put together. The mixed-use zoning gives added bonuses to developers. We don't want mixed-use zoning. Go take a look at Hudson Terrace, see what it is to be twenty feet from a street that's busy. See if you would want a home there. See if you would want to back onto a home that now has nothing between it and the street but a big dwelling covering eighty percent of the property with impervious surface, sixty percent with a building and no restrictions whatsoever. Last night at the planning board, Mr. Prito said he would ask you that we revisit the draft ordinances because they were put together quickly. Well, they weren't put together quickly, they were put together sloppily and without public input. And they were put together ignoring the details from the green community, who are the only people who could determine whether something affects the Palisades and how that should be input into an ordinance. And you got the data, you got it site by site, which sites meet the high requirements and which don't, and you ignored them and just said, "reference them." But guess what referencing does? It gives attorneys money because they go in and talk to other attorneys and they decide what works. You put it in your ordinance and it's there. It's not to be questioned. We've been through this and stormwater and infrastructure. You have the Mazer report, very clearly says we have a problem. You can't write a report and say that we don't. We have the report that was commissioned years ago, a few years ago, that led to the analysis on the smoke study. Once again, the smoke study, which you buried with the attorney and haven't released. How do you construct over a thousand more units without knowing the impact on our sewers and our stormwater? It's disgraceful. And if you, last night, they said we might face a curve on all-new development. So what? I'm willing, as a resident, to have a curve on development, to have development done right. You can have it done the wrong way, which is what you're doing, you're ignoring the existing known problems and you're pushing forward. You're, you're not putting in a ban on underground garages, that's a generic ban, that does, isn't written properly. You're not dealing with the green roots, you're not dealing with the flooding, you're not dealing with our sewer systems, you're just creating a document that fits a number. Shame on you all.
Okay, yeah, thank you. Next. Next, please. Okay, no one's seen, no one here, I'm going to close it, I need the motion to close it. I know, wait a second.
Second.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
May I make a couple of comments?
Okay, yes.
So, I, I'm having a lot of trouble following, there, there's a lot to unpack about what Karen and Marty both said. I've offered to publicly debate, all of you, numerous times. It's very easy for you to stand up here, throw a bunch of loose facts around in the air, without any basis, without any documentation, nothing. You talk about, you know, I, I'm just going to go about just a couple of things because it's, the only thing that's disgraceful at this point is really your behavior. And the reality of the matter is you talk about campaigns, right? And you, and you pull out this campaign literature. I ask you, Marty and Karen Geiger, how many people did you campaign for openly? Let's start with that. That's, you know, it has, first of all, this is my kind of speech, okay? Number, number two, you know very well that when I was elected, I had no control over anything. And the first, my first order of business was being at odds with the way I saw things being done. So, to try to hold that over anyone's head, myself or Mr. Park, makes zero sense. And you know this, which means, which means for the, for the people that are home, uh, listening to all of this, what it means is that it's, this is just nothing more than grandstanding at best because they know that we didn't have the control to do anything with litigation. And as far as the litigation goes, let's be very clear, five Democrats voted to litigate against eight hundred Sullivan, the very same Democrats that, to my understanding now, Marty and Karen Geiger stood side by side. Where were you? Where were you when you shoved, when we were saying, we're telling everyone about the settlement and saying, "Don't do this because this is what's going to happen, you know nothing about your infrastructure." You were all for the settlement, okay? You filed papers in court, supported.
Supporting what?
Supporting eight hundred Sullivan.
No.
Yes, look, look, this isn't a back and forth.
Don't lie to me.
This is not a back and forth.
Don't lie about the board.
This is not a back and forth, what it's mine. Hold them, hold them. Hold them and I'll be happy to go through them with you. This isn't, this isn't a back and forth. I'm not going to lie. I'm not going to lie.
That's what you're doing.
Like I said, I'm very happy.
That's what you're doing, Mr. Kadruviz.
I'm very happy to stand here.
I'm not going to listen to you lie.
I'm very happy to stand here to debate you at any point in time, we'll pull the papers and the, and the facts will speak for themselves. Okay, now, I don't want, I don't want to go back, back and forth with any of this. This whole plan, when she was discussing with, with Mazer and, and, and the sewer pipes and all that, yeah, I, I understand all, all that. I, in, in fact, I, I believe that I was the first person to start talking about, to start talking about that. I had actually brought it to the attention of Ms. Geiger, uh, and Marty Geiger, if I'm not mistaken. Where were they in terms of, uh, saying anything about that?
Solutions.
There was no solutions. It's very, and thank you, that's, that's another very good point, right? It's very easy to stand there and to criticize people, to criticize over and over, that's all I've heard from you for years now, it's nothing but criticism, okay? But since I've been on the council and, and, and as far as I'm concerned, this council, this mayor, has worked very, very hard for six months. Where was, where was anyone's support when the, uh, uh, previous administrator was constantly publicly criticized, privately criticized, uh, in, in walking out the door? And we had, and, and, and think about this for a moment, ladies and gentlemen, okay? You start January first, when you really have any sort of control of anything. You fall into a place where nothing was done, they knew about these three hundred and... How many units is it, Mike?
Three twenty-nine.
Three twenty-nine, they know about these three hundred twenty-nine units, nobody did a single thing. There's Ms. Simon back there, she did nothing about it, okay? Zero.
And you just sat there and...
I wasn't on the council, miss, I'm sorry, I wasn't on the council. And it is my time. We walk in January first, right? And we're left with the deadline by January thirty-first. On top of that, we have members of the council resigning, we have, uh, we have to deal with...
Someone else's force.
No, 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 it's not, I, I, I'm not blaming anyone, I'm stating the facts, there's a big difference here, right? So, let's please understand what we have to go through as individuals. We have to deal, we have to deal with the, with, we have to deal with all sorts of issues, deadlines, people walking out the door. And I don't think people understand how difficult it is to bring qualified people to come here and work for us, okay? Because of behavior like this that you just witnessed, constant criticism of people without having any basis of facts, and it's very easy to sit down there in the peanut gallery and to throw, throw things at people, right? But in the reality of the matter is this council has done more in the past six months than anyone has accomplished in the past, I don't know, five, forty years? Whatever they, yeah, yeah, whatever. Throw, throw any number on it you want. But the reality of the matter is you created the problems, correct? You created the problems. We're sitting here trying to solve them by bringing more and more professionals to the table, all right? Nobody, who solved the Jerry problem? You didn't solve the Jerry problem. This, the council, the council, you created it. You created the Jerry problem. No, no, I'm saying, I mean, I say you, I'm talking about...
Okay, let's, let's move on, just, just focus on this agenda only, please, stop it. Please, please stop it, focus on this agenda, please. Okay, yeah, everybody calm down, let's move on and focus about this agenda only, okay? So, please, calm down, please.
Happy to have a public hearing at any point in time. You don't want to because you're afraid to.
I'm not afraid of being...
Okay, uh, anybody else, I want to, okay, please, please.
Mayor. We have the motion and second.
Uh, we need the motion? Okay, we need both motion and second. Okay, read about the resolution twenty-five, one forty-two?
Before we move on, can we have the votes for motion to close the public hearing?
Uh, yeah, okay, yeah.
Uh, sorry, I need the vote, motion was by...
No, no, we already did all in favor, we did it.
Oh, you did?
Yeah, we did all in favor. We did all in favor, so, you know, we don't need that one.
Got it.
We did it. And then, okay, we are already in a resolution, we are opened and then discussion right now. Anybody else wanted to add or more about this agenda? If none, okay, let's move on, the, okay, who's going to...
Before you just move on, I know that there was just a, a comment about the audiovisual format that we had last meeting, I talked about it in the opening of my statement. B I S Digital is doing a review right now. Currently, our streaming platform, uh, to do a dual stream has an issue and we're doing a holistic review, I just received the scope of work, I'm looking at the project, it's, as you can see, there's issues right now, um, that's beyond our control because we've been using mixers and others, uh, devices that have, it's not really compatible with the Liberty Recorder and some other devices. So, I'm just, just wanted to let folks know about that as well, just wanted to throw that up there.
Okay, thank you. And then, would you read about the resolution twenty-five dash one forty-two?
Sure, ma'am. Resolution number twenty-five dash one forty-two, resolution endorsing the Housing Element and Fair Share Plan to the Borough of Englewood Cliffs, master plan previously adopted by the Borough Planning Board.
Okay, I need the motion. I need the motion.
Motion to approve.
Yeah, motion to approve, then one by second.
Second.
Okay, okay, discussion, we already did the discussion. Okay, council discussion, yeah, okay. Anybody wanted to add on here, any discussion?
Yeah, I, I, I just want to say a couple of things on this resolution, Mr. Mayor. It's, it's, again, it's, it's very easy to criticize, but unfortunately, this is very different than the first settlement. This is a very, very different experience. What we're dealing with here is, this is a law that is a state mandate, I'm not listening to, right, Bob?
Yes.
Okay? We have no choice but to comply with this law. And if you don't comply, then it opens up, can you please explain what happens, Bob? So, the public understands.
The Borough could lose its immunity with regard to builders remedy. Sorry, thank you, ma'am. Yes, uh, thank you to, the, the, the planning board has already adopted the Housing Element and Fair Share Plan, that's, that's, uh, part of the master plan, that's the, uh, that comes under the purview of the, uh, planning board, it's not the mayor and council's, uh, document. But, uh, here we're asked to endorse it to effectively show that the council understands that, uh, we have an affordable housing obligation and that we're going to, um, support the implementation of the Housing Element and Fair Share Plan. Our support is shown by the endorsement of the resolution. If the planning board did not adopt the, uh, Housing Element by, uh, the thirtieth of June, um, the, the Borough would have lost any immunity it had with regard to builders remedy suits and litigations and it would have opened up the Borough to a, um, host of, uh, proposals for development that would have not, that would have been inconsistent with the, uh, plan that was adopted by the planning board. So, um, this is a, uh, happening statewide, uh, all the towns have been scrambling to put it together and, uh... And Mr. Mestreda has worked hard on it. And all the towns are now meeting to adopt the housing plan, the planning boards, and for the governing bodies to endorse at this time.
Thank you, Bob. You know, I think it's very important for the people at home to understand, and maybe the mayor touched upon this yesterday, correct me if I'm wrong, please, but if you really want change, folks, you have to take it to your state legislators. Change it at the governor's office. Change it with Ms. Ellen Park, who's living here in town, who, I believe, has endorsed this plan fully. That's where you need to change this thing. And then we can make, then we can work even harder to make other changes for you. But until those things are done, it would be, it would not be a prudent thing to do and to not endorse, to not put together some sort of plan. Again, I want to reiterate, this is something very, very different than what Ms. Geiger had endorsed just a few years ago with that settlement. This is something, this is, you cannot even compare it to. That was a settlement agreement that was put through. That was not, that was something that was forced on us at two o'clock in the morning, despite hundreds of residents coming out and saying, "We don't want you to do this." Okay? And she was the very first one in line that was endorsing this, through her newsletter and otherwise, going door to door, whatever the case may be. This is, we did whatever was possible to protect the residents from another disaster like eight hundred Sylvin. And again, this disaster from eight hundred Sylvin, I'll reiterate, the litigation for that disaster was voted upon by five different Democrats, okay? They're the ones that pushed us into this disaster.
Blinder, blinder.
Votes matter. Yes, that's correct. I would love to divide, I would love to debate this with you at any point in time, not today because we have other business, not today, but because it doesn't work because I don't have my documents in front of me. No, 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 no. Let's set together, this is what I propose. This is what I propose. We put together a nice agenda. We'll put together a nice agenda.
Counselor, then, Mr. Counselor, can you cut it off, please? Okay.
Can I add one?
Yeah, okay, yes, please, very sharp.
This is, I see, an opportunity for the town, okay? And this is our job, is to protect the citizens and the residents of the town from another disaster. Now, I admit, when I went for office, I was against high density. This was, for me, the biggest issue. Now that I sit inside, I see I really have no choice. We don't want to hire attorneys for affordable housing and pay millions of dollars because it's not working, okay? So what we have to do, and this is our job, to take what we have and to do the maximum to protect the residents as far as we can do. And this is the way I see our job as the council. We have nothing what to do and how to help you to reduce the numbers because it will not work. We spend millions of dollars and we get nowhere. We were the poster boy for all New Jersey. Here they go. Look how many millions they spend. We don't want to do that again. We're gonna do the right way and the legal way, as much as we can do. We have good help, Mr. Mestreda. We have a good attorney. Not the million-dollar attorneys that were sitting here and writing letters or whatever. Who knows what they did, okay? Seven million they made, six million, whatever. We don't want that. And we promise you, we're gonna do the right job. We'll get input from the public. We're not there yet, okay? We discussed it today. But after labor day, we're gonna start, okay? And you're gonna have an input. And we, believe me, you're gonna be protected as much as we can. We cannot promise you, only promise can tell you, go to Trenton and talk to the governor and move the Democrats, and that's about it. But I don't want to go there because you're not gonna get me nowhere. So please, be patient with us. We're doing our best. Under other circumstances, while we are doing our job. And thank you, and hopefully, we're gonna go, we're gonna have a good ride together.
I'd also like to say, Mr. Mayor, if you don't mind. This is all about, Karen Geiger's been doing this for ten, fifteen, twenty, I don't even know. This is all about control to her. Okay, this is, as long as she's the one that's making the decisions in the end, that's all she really cares about, right? I mean, that's all, that's what I believe, okay? No, I don't think, I don't think so. I don't think so.
Okay, let's move on. Next, anybody else?
Okay, so we have a motion and a second on Resolution number twenty-five dash one forty-two. Do we have a roll call?
Roll call, please.
Unroll call. Councilwoman Drummond?
No, and I want to say I was not on the committee. I only got the report a week ago. And I actually echo Mr. Geiger's sentiments. And Paramus actually did get something moving today, reducing their amount. So maybe we should have looked further into it. Thank you.
Councilman Luciano?
Absent.
Councilwoman Baguette?
Yes.
Councilman Liang?
Yes.
Councilman Patel?
Yes.
Councilman Cudruvis?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passed.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Resolution twenty-five dash one forty-three, Resolution amendment, Resolution number twenty-five ninety-eight, appointed twenty twenty-five, some camp counselors and directors. I need a motion and a second. Okay, wants a second?
Yeah.
Okay. Patel, any discussion? No discussion? Roll call, please.
Unroll call. Councilwoman Drummond?
Yes.
Councilman Luciana, absent. Councilwoman Baguette?
Yes.
Councilman Liang? Councilman Patel?
Yes.
Councilman Cudruvis?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And no closer, I just want to confirm that in the close, I will just add on. Everybody very concerned about this one. I am saying both with you, but I don't have any power and authority. Even when you think about it, ten years later, and they will put on the Democrat Party another fifth round of affordable housing. They're gonna make it here this time more and more during the metropolitan area. So we are very limited, and that you should understand. We are here to look and govern. We don't want this kind of endorsement. But unfortunately, we don't have any authority. We don't have any power. Mr. Michael, Mr. Indicat, thank you for your support, and we did everything in here. So please, understand everybody, okay? You must have taken, you must have another, you know, force number, you know, affordable housing law. We have to, you know, abide the law. Otherwise, we will use our immunity power to do it. We don't have any options. Please understand that. Thank you, everyone. I want to, I need a motion to close. Okay? I need a motion to adjourn. Okay, second, all in favor?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, everyone. Have a nice weekend.